Uh, let's see, what, twenty seven years? Yeah, twenty seven, twenty seven years, two days ago, I think. October thirtieth was twenty seven years. I believe.
You have, uh, if we would appoint you to the board, we meet twice a month. So that's first and third Mondays.
Yes, sir.
At seven o'clock, whenever meetings. And you have that particular time available.
Yes, sir.
It's not a problem.
Not a problem for me.
Okay.
Unless it goes to like midnight, then I do go to work the next day, so.
And sometimes we do have special meetings.
Sure.
So, I mean, we may be, you know, there was about a month and a half that I think we met every week.
Every, yeah, every Monday.
I mean, just things came up that we had to meet.
Sure.
A lot of times, we, if we can, we'll try to meet like right on a Monday night at six o'clock, if possible.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm generally home by three o'clock, three thirty, so.
Well, just so that we don't have two nights out of the week taken up. We try to do something on a Monday at six, if we can.
Sure.
Where you work?
I work for Heshet Book Group. Right there, Heshet Book Group. We, uh, we're the third largest book company in the world. So, we're doing a lot of books, maintenance of other.
You read them well?
No, I would, I wish I could. I like to read, so. Just don't have any time. No time to read, so I do the audio books.
So what, tell, tell me a little bit about your interest and what reason you'd like to participate on the board?
Well, uh, my interests, I'm just a, I'm a fixer, so I'm always fixing or working on something. As far as being on the town board goes, to be honest with you, it's like not anything that I'm super excited to do. It's one of those things where I feel like people have got to step up in this town and take some responsibility. And so, twenty seven years here, I think it's time that I step up, take a little responsibility for the town.
Yeah, I hear that, that's what we need. We've got too many people that want to bitch about everything that we do or don't do.
That don't want to show up, don't want to say.
But that happens in life about any, any kind of.
Yeah.
Situation that you get into, like you run into that.
Yes, sir. Other than that, I'm, I'm pretty boring, I'm a homebody. I like to be home, don't like to leave, don't like to go to work. Wish I was retired. Far from it.
It doesn't work, I work harder now than I did when I was retired.
Right.
Being retired doesn't work. Uh, the, uh, if we would appoint you, you would only be good until
A year.
The end of next, next year.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
Are you willing to go over to the courthouse in the spring and, uh, then run? Because in order to stay on the board, unless somebody would run against you and take your position, you need to run for your position on the board.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. I don't know that that's any big hard thing to do.
Right.
You know, we started that way, I'm on here because I, I, nobody ran against me. And so I decided I'd like to see what happens with this Arger project, which I'm sure you're interested in. And I don't think that'll be the end of it.
No, no, not by long term.
But, uh.
We're only scratching the surface, I think.
Yeah, and, and if, if we have enough people on the board that are very interested in all this, I think maybe we could, can control it because we're looking at several things happening uh, that really I think most of the town doesn't know about, but we got a situation with forty seven and sixty five out there that can cause us to buy, build a twenty-five million dollar sewer plant. If in fact, uh, we, we haven't gotten into the nitty gritty yet with the people involved, find out if that's gonna happen.
It's that forty-seven commons project? So it's called forty-seven commons, the P U D out there?
Yeah. See, they don't have any water and they don't have a sewer. And they're not on the aquifer, we are.
Hmm.
So anyway, that's just one of the things to look down the road that would be a, something that we'd be definitely involved in, and that's something that the town's gonna be involved in big time if, if everything works out. We, hopefully, we wouldn't have to pay for everything if the town is involved with it.
Here, our, our situation is, we, we are gonna have to build a new sewer plant.
Right.
Sooner rather than later. And their, their idea is out there that they, they don't have enough customers to justify the price of a sewer plant out there.
Right.
So what they're contemplating doing is going in to just basically say halves with us, or.
And that gives us a new plant and them a plant.
Give us a plant at, at a reduced cost for the town.
Sure.
And they'll form a board of which they're, they what, they're talking five people. Thorntown would have two on it, and there'd be two from the township out there, and then one at large.
Gotcha.
So that the, the county is not involved to try to run the show.
Mm-hmm.
They're, they're.
So that's what we're trying. We're trying to stay away from the fact they have a county involved.
Right.
They're, they're trying to form a regional sewer district. That, that would be, and then that board would.
Be responsible for that plant.
Yes, for the, well, for, for that sewer district.
Yes.
Uh, more or less, they kind of threw out, if, if we were to do a sewer plant here, they'd have to, they'd have to put in sewer lines all the way out there. But at the same time, they, then, then they would almost be treated as a customer of Thorntown's.
Right.
And they need water, too, so we have to run water line.
They're gonna, they're gonna have a fight on their hands with the water. It's already Leaven's Water District. But, uh, well, it is Leaven's Water District. I don't know that it's been approved yet by the Utility Reiquitatory Commission or whatever that is, but that's, that's Leaven's Water District.
I don't know how they're gonna provide it, they can't even provide enough water for Leaven.
They got water coming.
Citizens.
It's their water district, the county's gonna have a fight on their hands with that, so.
So where did they finally decide to pipe it in from?
Citizens, it's coming from Indianapolis.
I think they're coming from the east and from the south. That water tower at, uh, out there at that, behind the tractor supply at the first Brownsburg exit, that water tower, I think they're gonna go, citizens already feeding that water tower, I think they're gonna go from that water tower up to Leaven with that. And then there's supposed to be, I thought there was supposed to be something coming from the east, too, but. But anyway, that, i- if they do that with the sewer, that would give people out along forty-seven a chance to hook up to, they don't have to, um, they don't have to hook up to the sewer.
But it would be beneficial.
It would be.
Well, it depends, if they just put in a septic system in, maybe.
Right, well, what, what'll end up happening is, is
Forced.
Once, once at time, once those people, they, yeah, they would be forced to, if their septic system ever goes bad, they won't give them a new permit.
Correct.
They will say you have sewer in front of your house, connect it.
Yep.
But, uh, uh, from what I'm, my understanding is they won't force you to do it right off the get-go. So. But that gives the town an opportunity to pick up more customers, and then
Sure.
everybody out there would be treated as a customer, too.
See, they didn't do that in Zionsville either. When you come out of Zionsville on three thirty-four, going to the east or going to the west, I mean, the people, my friends that lived out there by that lake, they had water line by there and sewer and everything, they weren't forced to do any of it.
Right.
But it was their benefit to do it, and they, eventually they ended up having to do it anyway.
It was in New Ross, just sort of the same thing.
Okay.
They put in sewer lines over there and, and, and it wasn't, like I said, it wasn't a forced thing, but it was recommended pretty highly, pretty, pretty sternly.
Especially while they're there and they got everything tore up.
Right.
Yeah, and generally, they give you a discount when they're there.
The town hooked up everybody almost, almost at no cost to the residential customer.
Yeah, it'd be hard to pass that up.
The grants that they got for it, it was the same.
The only downside is now you're paying a bill every month.
Like most of them said, what they were paying was, you know, what they're paying now was quite a bit less over a year's period of time than if their septic were needed.
Sure.
Or replaced, or, and like I said, you know, same thing, if your septic was bad, needs are, you know, needs are replaced or whatever.
They're not gonna give you a permit, but then you're gonna have to pay full price to hook up.
So, if you wanted to have it hook up now, but the thing, they're still all on wells, they have city water, but nobody wants to get off the wells, they're all used to well running, they don't want city water.
Yeah. I disagree with that. Probably as water table is gonna start dropping, a lot of wells are just starting to go dry. Start a well drilling company, make some money.
Brandon Grusy has got anything on?
Off the top of my head, kind of like what he said, your term would be till the end of next year, so at least you have a, a year to figure out if you really like it or not.
Sure.
You don't, no one can force you to run.
Right.
You know, I, I can't. But, uh. Well, you really, you really don't have a year, you, if you, if you, you got till next spring, cause you, I think it's in, uh,
It'd have to be at the corner.
June, you have to.
It's, yeah, it's June.
Deadline for the ballot.
Yeah, it's a deadline, you gotta go over and then get fifteen signatures of, of people that can vote here in town.
Sure.
That type of thing, and get that back in over there. And then you're on the ballot. But, uh, you, you do have a year until you would be off, but you got, if you're gonna want to stay on, you gotta go do that in the spring.
Sure. Well, to be honest, it doesn't make sense to walk in the door and, and put myself out there, go to all the trouble and stay for a year. I'd at least get on the ballot and try to keep going.
Yeah, and that, that's a four-year term.
Sure.
And they're, and, uh, they're, we're separated, there's five of us on the board who are separated by two years. So three people run out at one time, and then two people have another two years.
That's good, so there's some experience.
There's always some experience on the board.
Yeah. Next year, it'd be myself and Grumpy and, and your term for, end at the end of twenty-six, so.
Yeah, I think Ally has to run, too.
And, yep, she has to run next year.
Well, I mean, to be honest, look around, I really don't see a whole lot of anybody else beating the door down trying to get in here, so.
Right.
You know? Unfortunately, it'd be nice if we did, but.
Well, we do have a new group coming down to our population.
It's true, it's true. But how many, well, yeah, I mean, we're gonna see outsiders, it's, it's, it's a done deal. We're not gonna get away from it. It's more about, well, they're nice homes, I don't see us getting a lot of riffraff. Not right now. Still too expensive to live out here for riffraff. That's the thing, that's the, you know, one of the nice things about living out, you know, in Boone County. It's expensive, more expensive to live here than it is Clinton County, per se, but, yeah. When it's expensive.
Well, I was told there's twelve sites out there that have been sold.
That's what I heard, I heard, and, and we drove by there yesterday, and there was a lot of people that modeled.
Was there?
So I figured that place would sell out pretty fast. You've got all these people, me, Lil' Lily, they're gonna be looking. You know, I wouldn't want to live in Leaven, if I could move to Thorntown and still enjoy the small-town environment, you know, it makes sense. I see a lot of people wanting to come out here.
We know somebody that's, they didn't know about this, and then when we told them, we should move to Thorntown, and they were like, where are you gonna live in Thorntown? It was like, hey, it's brand new, so. Like, you're kidding me? Maybe they're thinking about coming this way, so. They'll, they'll, they'll sell quickly, I'm assuming, cause you, nothing lasts very long now.
Right.
With all the homes that are in town now, when one comes up for sale, they sell pretty quick, so.
Yep. We got a good school system, I mean, this town is set up to win, it's just, we need to make sure that it's set up for Thorntown to win.
Yeah.
And not our neighbors. Cause I'm sure everybody loves, yes, well, that.
Guys, anybody got any other questions? You're, Grusy? Any?
No, I mean, if you got questions for us.
Yeah.
Not really. I mean, I kind of know what I'm walking into, I mean, I don't know any details, but I have a pretty good idea of what's going on. It can't be any fun if nobody's beating the door down, so.
Well, he's here because no one ran against him. He's here because nobody ran against the person
Very true.
that took his spot, and he's here because no one ran against the spot that he took. So, yeah, we had both of those positions open. When was it? Uh, last year, twenty-four?
Yeah, it was January, it was last year, right?
Yeah, and th- those two fellows that were on the board then, no one, no one ran against him. Nobody. So Larry, he's, his health's not that good, so he went ahead and, and quit. Um, the other guy stayed on, he said that he would stay on for a year, but he wanted, he wanted us to try to find somebody to replace him. So once we did find someone to replace him, he, he then resigned and he appointed.
They found you a long time ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they've been trying to catch you for a while.
Getting into meetings, so.
But you're, you're right, there's, there's not a, there's not a big turnout for meetings, there's not a big interest in.
Not until the water prices go up. You don't want to see some people.
Nah, you won't.
Really?
We, we started off with the, with the sewer project, I mean, that raised rates a bunch. And it, it's not that anybody wanted to raise rates, it's, we have to. Even when we did the sewer project, the, the state, more or less, or those in charge of grants, told us, you, you were not gonna get any grant money unless you raise your rates. You gotta help yourself first before we'll step in and help you. They just haven't raised rates in so long, they're just
Right.
too cheap.
Yep, I mean, it makes sense, and if our system's outdated and it's gotta be fixed, it's gotta be redone, somebody's gonna pay for it.
Yeah. So.
Well, we got some help there, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
And that's nice.
That's good, but when you're forced, when Idam forces you to do something, which is they did in this case, the project's about three, over three million. And that, so they give you seven hundred and fifty thousand, so there's a disconnect in there. Cause it, yeah, so now we gotta figure out how to get the rest of the money and how to disperse it so that the people in town don't leave town because they can't pay the water bill.
Right.
And that's, and the sewer was the same way, and we kind of, we, which we made it, we as a council made a mistake with the sewer, and which was our own fault, and it cost us another, well, two hundred and fifty thousand or whatever it was, we had to pay for that damn liner.
Yeah.
But with, that was our fault, we let that, we weren't smart enough to stop it before that happened. And so we suffered that deal, but the, but the, the plant we put in is working, everything's working like it's supposed to. It just, we're not big enough. And if we, I think we're okay through the hundred and sixty-three homes out here, but at that point, we're about, almost back to Idam saying we're, we're too much.
Over capacity, no more new permits, gotta build, we're expanding.
Yeah, and we're down to the fact that, that we need a mechanical plant, which costs, the estimate, somebody, I don't know where Dan brought that up, was about twenty-five million for a mechanical plant, but that isn't the drawback to me, the drawback to me is, you gotta have somebody to, to take charge of that plant twenty-four hours a day. So now, you've got people, you've got, you've got staffing problem because you've got people that are gonna have vacations and that type of thing, so you gotta decide how many people it takes to run that plant.
Right.
On top of the fact that you're gonna pay for the plant itself.
Sure.
And that's an ongoing thing, it's not gonna drop off at any time soon.
Right, probably only increase.
So, I know John from the insider work, and something that me and him have both seen is, instead of it being like, put on your utility bill every month, it's actually, and I brought this up because one time we talked about having to replace the water lines or put a liner in.
Sewer lines?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it sewer?
Sewer.
Okay, yeah. But anyway, I just, in casual conversation, I said, you know, I'm, I'm kind of against putting a liner in, I think we need to do it right, and get going, just replacing. But the way they did it that we've seen is, they do the project, and then it's handed over to the county treasurer, and it's, you know, each homeowner would pay X amount of dollars, and then each half, so two times a year with your taxes, you pay this payment on your taxes. If you don't pay it, then your property can be and will be sold on tax.
Yep, it's just like property tax.
But I mean, it's, it's raked out over, you know, like a fifteen-year period.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I think it's a nice way to do it, and then, I mean, if you sell it, then whoever buys the thing inherits that.
Yep, it's attached to the property.
That, uh, remaining bill. If you got the money, you pay it off, then good for you, that's a selling point.
So you, you're just talking, what are you talking about, laterals from the house to the sewer?
No, I'm just saying, general one we've seen.
Oh.
Whether it be that, or whether it be, uh, Lake Holiday and Crawford, so they dredge that lake, and they did it that way. They split it up between lot owners, and you, I'm just saying, it's a different vehicle to get the money as.
Yeah. Cause Heritage Lake had to do it for their sewers, didn't they? Wasn't that what it was for sewers?
Yeah.
Well, I, I forget what they call that, um, it, it, it's a local income tax.
The special.
I, I forget what they call it, yeah, it's, it's like a local income tax for a project, like the school board, uh, just for instance, I know in Leaven, I think they had a project where they wanted to do the school, the school system did a project, well, they made a new tax to pay for that to every homeowner in the Leaven School District area, and then that was for a certain amount of years. And then, once that runs out, that tax should drop off.
Right.
But the problem, well, I know what happened over there, is once that tax was ready to drop off, they wanted to do another project.
And keep it going.
Keep it going, yes.
Yeah, the, these are an actual, I mean, there's a set amount, I mean, it basically appears almost like a loan, and, uh, when it's done, it's done, but yeah, Heritage Lake is called just a special assessment. Lake Holiday was actually considered a conservancy tax, is what they called that one, and that was for dredging the lake out, whatever they do, but I'm just saying.
Well, the problem.
Something to think about.
One of the problems here, that I don't think you were on the board, maybe you were when, when we had the engineer in here, that talked about the sewer project, the lining of sewer, that the flood that gets in there in the rainstorms is not coming from the main sewer, so to speak, it's coming from the laterals, which means there, there's, uh, about everybody's house in town uh, was put in back, except probably here, well, no, about here with your neighbors. The newer homes weren't that way, but the older homes were, uh, foot, uh, tile.
Clay tile.
Just clay tile. Well, they, that absorbs all that moisture running through the grass and, 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 uh, your yard, and that's where the affluent's coming in, that's superseding what we can put into our ponds down there. And that's when Idam comes in and says, hey, you guys are getting way too much in there. And it's not necessarily the main sewer lines, but the main sewer lines cannot be lined. And that, that does, I mean, some of it does go in that way, but, uh, a big portion of it goes in through the laterals. So that means, I mean, it's, it's like the guy was telling us that, if you do one thing, you about gotta, you can't force people to put in laterals. So, percentage-wise, you're not gonna gain that much extra affluent that you can put in there if you just line the mains. Am I making any sense at all?
Yeah.
That's what he explained to us, and that was, that, that was, what was his name that actually engineered the pond out there, who told us that?
I would, I don't understand how we couldn't force somebody to do something, though, if, if we can prove that it's, you know, detrimental to the system. I mean, if they were saying, hey, this is causing this problem.
How would you even do that, though? But knock on the door and be like, well, it's gonna cost twenty-eight thousand dollars, you got three weeks, you know what I mean?
No, I don't think you could do it with that approach, but I mean, this is how long you have to fix it. You know? Whether it be twenty-four months, or five years, or whatever.
That'd be a big bill, I think you'd see a lot of people put their sales lines in the front yard first.
But I mean, if it's hurting.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
System in general. I mean, there comes a point where, you know, somebody's gotta say uncle, and, cause what other choice do you have?
Well, well, let me, let me tell you, now this is one property which is mine. I was told, of course, by people that aren't over there anymore, that my sewer ran straight back, I'll, uh, be out on the south side of my house, run straight back, and hits the sewer that goes across seven feet in front of my building. Okay, runs east and west from one man home to another, one down there by, uh, what's his name's house, and down here in the middle of that alley. Well, I was having trouble with, with my sewer system in the house, had it dug up, and that isn't the case, it goes, it goes out of my house and goes back toward my building, and it gets back there within so far in front of that building, and it turns and goes across the neighbor's yard and goes over there to that man home. That's totally illegal. But that's, that's what they did back, well, I, when I was here in the fifties when they put all this sewer system in, and they just, there wasn't any legalities back then, so to speak. And they, I'm just one example, I don't know if you can tell everybody can know where their sewer runs, because I would've thought mine ran back, we dug up there, we dug down eight to ten feet trying to find my sewer to hook onto, and it wa, it wasn't there. And it took a while to figure out what happened, and that, and I did, I mean, I know where it goes to now, and it cuts across the neighbor's yard to the south.
Yeah, cause they're down, what, about four foot?
Uh.
Mine's nine.
No.
I said mine's eight and a half.
Yeah.
Your sewer line is that deep?
Oh, yeah.
See, mine wasn't that deep, where it came out of the house was only about, oh, maybe two and a half, three feet, and it ran back, and it did have, it was tile, clay tile, and that big pine tree there had a lot of roots in it. Well, I took all that out and put in, uh, plastic pipe, so I got rid of all that, and I followed it on toward my building, and then all of a sudden, there wasn't any more sewer. When I dug back up to it, it had an elbow in it, and turned and went over across the neighbor's yard.
Because ours lies together right in the alley, runs right down the middle of the alley to the man home. And it's, I, I don't think it's much more than four foot.
I know mine is nine feet, I, I've dug it up, I know. Cause I was like, am I ever gonna get to this?
And I don't think it, well, I know it's not because I've, I've been in the man home before, I mean, and noticed tissue and stuff, so. Cause when I first bought that house, me and my dad were painting, and my dad said, well, is that grable? Maybe not, but it's something green. He said, well, what would be green, what do you want to eat? He said, well, what would be drained? What are you going to hear? I was like, that's a pretty good point. I went and looked, kitchen sink, there's a Jacuzzi tub in there. Jacuzzi tub had about that much in it, and the kitchen sink had about that much, just, just solid sewer. Yeah, it was a bad deal. We just said, we ripped that tub out, and a buddy of mine, he bought it, it's in his brand-new house, and I'm like, good for you.
Would you have to fix it if it ran a snake through it?
Um, well, it was really weird because it went down as fast as it went up. So something happened with the town, apparently, and it backed up, but I didn't have a back flush valve in it. And Jeremy Young came and he, he snaked it, and, I mean, it was just clear water, it was, it was just like the water had back flushed or whatever, but, like I said, it went down as fast as it came up, and then, that's why we put one of those. That flush valve's in real fast.
Well, you got a, you got a basement, don't you?
Yeah.
Doesn't it have a drain in it?
That's like a sub drain?
Four drain.
Yes, your four drain.
Yeah, I got a sub pump, but I don't have a four drain.
Ah, interesting.
I was gonna say that, cause I figured, yeah, that, it had to, it'd have to be deeper than that to, to drain out to the manhole.
Yeah, cause my sub goes, the pipe comes up and ties into the sewage pipe.
Yeah. Yeah, my basement does too. I don't have a four drain in it either.
Okay. What time is it? Six thirty-one? What do we want with that? I have a question for whoever. So this redevelopment commission, um, right now it's looking like in you. I think, I think I can get the school board over. But you, I'm probably not saying some providing came here, but, until I know, but I'm, I'm trying to get her and my wife to do it, so that would fill two of the slots. This would be something we need like, maybe once a month, um, if that.
Possibly, but, and, and I don't even think, if there's no reason to need, I don't think they have to.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm hustling people, I'm trying to get people, Ally knows, she has a couple of people I've been relying pretty hard.
Well, we want, uh, John, can you come back at seven?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's when our meeting starts. You wanna do that and have him come back at seven, then we can discuss.
Yeah.
And cuss and whatever we wanna do.
Yeah.
See you guys.
Thank you, John.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.